Okay, good evening. This is the District 158 Committee, the whole meeting for November 5th. It is 6:03. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Garing.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Papaglia.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Okay, we have a quorum. Could we stand for the pledge, please? I'll lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under that indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Have everyone's attention for a second. Last night, the district lost a member of its family yesterday. Sandy Slider, a longtime employee of District 158 in the Fiscal Services Department, passed away following a long battle with heart complications. Sandy was a positive force in the fiscal office and will be sorely missed in the district. Please join me in a moment of silence in Sandy's memory. Thank you. Very shocking. Onto item three of the agenda, public comment. Do we have anybody here to make public comment? Physically here, so we have nobody physically here to make public comment, but I think we have several emails. Is that correct, Mr. Armstrong?
That's correct. We have three emails, public comments.
Again, we'll limit those to three minutes.
Okay, the first comment comes from Edward Cohen. Good evening. There is a rumor circling around the community that the board will be considering a budget increase tonight that will lead to a property tax increase to us, the taxpayers. If this is true, I find it troubling that even a 1% increase in the budget should be necessary at this time due to the fact the district's schools and buildings have all been nearly completely vacant and unoccupied between mid-March and mid-August of this year, which should have left a budget surplus rather than a budget deficit. Also, if, in fact, the massive and unsightly solar panel electricity generating project is up and running, that should also have saved the district thousands of dollars this year. Looking for your feedback. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Edward Cohen, P.S. Also, given that 99.7% to 99.8% of those under 60 who are infected with the coronavirus survive the disease and that those under 20 years of age are nearly immune from the infection, it would be great if you felt you had a mandate from the community to reopen our schools this coming Monday, November 9th, with the proposed hybrid learning project. The next comment was submitted by Amanda Standifer. Schools opening now. We all know the coronavirus. We are all stuck at home and wearing masks. That is not fair to people that are in school. People are too worried. It is like the flu, but one times worse. There is no need to worry. I've been thinking we should open schools again without masks. The students can't seem to focus with masks on. It's not right. This is too crazy. The right thing to do is only wash our hands, no masks, and not so much hand sanitizer. Let's open those schools. Have a great day. Smiley face. Savannah Standifer. This is Berg's class, Conley Elementary School. And the last comment is from Brittany Spears. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board and Dr. Rowe. I'm sure what I have to say is not new to you, but I feel very strongly that you should hear something like this every single day, that we do not have our children back in school. This district has failed. This district has chosen to stand behind a lawyer who says it could be risky. It has chosen to tower to voices that say they are scared to death of a virus with over a 97% survival rate. It has chosen to hang the fate of the district's children on the Henry Department of Health, who chose to abandon their proper counting practices to scrub, repeat positives, and instead follow the IDPH, who counts each retest of an individual as a new positive case. These ladies and gentlemen are all failures. Cities, counties, countries, all around us, are watching their positivity rates increase and tightening restrictions on aspects of daily life. Do you know what they are not shutting down? Education. These cities, counties, and countries have chosen to make their children their top priority and in so doing have helped their children, families, and businesses move forward as strong as ever. This district has failed our children, failed our families. For what? I work in healthcare. I've been on the front line of this pandemic since it began and remain there still. COVID admissions make up such a very small fraction of our patients and we have gotten very good at treating and discharging those patients. We are light years beyond where we started at the beginning of this pandemic. So do not place the blame on the healthcare system. We are showing up. We are doing our job. We are not terrified of something that is treatable and survivable. The very least we could ask of those charged with educating our children is to have the guts to do the same.
It was a carryover from the... Keep going.
There is no zero here. We will not get to zero. We have to stop waiting for that point. A vaccine is not the answer. The efficacy of a vaccine is questionable at best. It is not a fail-safe. The state of Illinois promised its citizens that an approved treatment for COVID would get us back to normal. Instead, we get a grasp on how to treat it and a treatment receives FDA approval, but we are jerked back into a more lockdown state. People will continue to be infected. That is not going to stop. It seems as though the virus is spreading more but becoming less deadly. That's what we hope for. That is the goal. So why is it we have not even sustained hybrid education? Is it lawyers? Is it the union? Is it the board? Someone owes us answers. You are failing us in remaining steadfast that you are doing all that you can. How many more children need to commit suicide? How many more parents need to quit their jobs in order to stay home and run school schedules and pick up large amounts of slack left behind by an inadequate system of education? How many more days do we let our children fall deeper into an abyss? How much longer do we have to watch our children spend hours muted and demoralized by a system that is telling them they aren't worth the effort?
Okay. That's enough for that one. Okay. Thank you, Sido Three, for providing their public comments this evening. Item four is revision and adaption of the agenda. Do we have any revisions to the agenda that anybody has? If not, make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented without any changes.
Second.
Second, okay. Second from Mr. Garing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, go forward with the agenda. And item five is curriculum and instruction. Mr. Garing, you are the chair.
Thank you. Glad that won the HHS course proposal for 2021-2022. Dr. Switzer.
Thank you very much. You will notice that our course proposals are quite a bit fewer in number than we typically have. This year, we really have looked through them really with a fine tooth comb and Dr. Bealan and Mrs. Kish at Huntley High School did a great job in sort of filtering through what are the most important course proposals for our students. You'll see there's only three proposed. The first one, culinary basics, is really just a name change. It makes sense to shift that name so that it aligns with the remainder of our culinary sequence. Because it's in the course booklet, we needed to bring that before the board to shift that title of the course. The second, symphonic orchestra, is the capstone of our orchestra sequence. Exciting for me because actually one of the first proposals that I brought before the board, large scale, when I started in the district, was to add orchestra, starting at sixth grade. So this is exciting for me to see this capstone come forward as opportunity for our students. So that is another piece, again, expected, also part of the Fine Arts Academy. And then last, a dual credit statistics class. And this is going to pair with our college algebra class to make for a full year of dual credit opportunity for students. Definitely lends towards the need for higher level statistics for our students in the math sequence and also will allow them to earn college credit. So three courses that really fit specific needs and we think will meet the needs of our students nicely. So we would request that those get brought forward for approval at the board meeting. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions from the team?
Dr. Switzer, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that there's no additional staff needs for this or extra costs going into these course proposals.
So for the orchestra course, what Dr. Bealan is working on is that we do have the need to potentially look for an orchestra teacher that can teach that high level. It may not be a new staff member for that. It may be the ability to look at staffing in other parts of the district where we have specialized orchestra teachers. If there is not, based on orchestra numbers, if there is not enough additional space in any of those schedules, we would potentially have a small addition, perhaps a part-time. And again, not likely that that would happen, but the orchestra piece, in order to make that work, we would need that teacher that would be highly qualified to teach the higher level and also have the additional space in the schedule. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I would recommend that we use that to have approval. Okay, that too, the Illinois School Report Card update, Dr. Switzer.
So this update is going to be a little bit different than what we would typically have for the school report card update. I will be sharing my screen and we have just a brief presentation. Typically, this is the time when we would be looking in-depth at our state data metrics and all that's going to emerge in the Illinois School Report Cards based on last year's data. This year is a really unique year. And the reason for that is that most of our metrics don't exist. And so the state actually has pulled back the school report card metrics. They've actually really just had to move on without quite a few of them, essentially most of the academic and growth measures. They are still producing the report card. However, it's curtailed. So we're just going to go through tonight, look at what should be in there, what they have pulled out, and then on what we have posted publicly on the school report card website. So we are going to look at an update of ESSA and the school report card reporting, a little bit of a reminder within this about the ESSA law and kind of how it impacts us. Explaining the impacts of COVID-19 on the school report cards. And the state has actually done a very good job on their website, clarifying just how many pieces of the report card either have had to be deleted or could be impacted by COVID because we also have some metrics that are reported, but the state very clearly delineates that they may or may not be accurate as they are in past years. And then just identifying updated indicators that we're going to monitor for each level. So just a reminder, the Every Student Succeeds Act was the act of federal legislation that was passed to replace No Child Left Behind. So it's been in place since 2015. And the purpose is to guarantee equal educational opportunity. That was also the purpose of NCLB. And so this is really a reauthorization and improvement of the old NCLB. Every state develops an ESSA plan. The state is bound by federal guidelines for elements of this plan. And I'll just say for a quick moment, you may have heard publicized, the U.S. Department of Education has announced that for this year, states will not be granted waivers for state testing. So they've already stated that. Last year in the spring, the U.S. Department of Education allowed states to request a waiver if the state needed to be in a remote setting, and most states did. Illinois was one of them, which is why we didn't take all of the assessments in Illinois. They've already stated that this year that will not be an option. So that just really remains to be seen as to the impact that's going to have for in-school, if we're every other day, what does that do to the testing windows? We'll keep the board updated on that. So again, reminding that we do have accountability summative designations. And they're based on a combination of our ranking in the state as well as subgroup performance. So they basically break it down into core academic indicators, which are 75% of the total score in a normal year, and school quality indicators that are a little bit more of affective indicators, which would be 25% of the total score. And again, that's in a normal year, in a typical year. And then I'll let you know kind of what's changed. So due to COVID-19 crisis, and really it was the entire fourth quarter of last year for schools across the state, the state actually identified different data pieces as three different designations. Data unavailable, and you can see the list of all of our assessments, our growth percentiles, assessment participation percentage, achievement gap, and the climate survey, the five essentials, were just completely unavailable. And the state has it listed on their website and just says data unavailable due to COVID. They also have several metrics where they list the metric and they actually report the data, but they say there is a possible data impact due to COVID-19. An example of that would be attendance. So they typically report student attendance and they reported it again, but they just made the notation to say many, many schools had to report attendance in different ways while students were remote last year. And the state actually gave schools latitude to do that. So they are reporting all that schools submitted, but they're just noting that there may be some inconsistencies with that data. And then last of all, caution statewide thresholds, where they believe that data statewide might be compromised. So again, they're reporting it, but the statewide thresholds that they would typically look for are just adjusted. There's no way to really compare them to prior years. So this might look familiar from last year. In a typical year, these are our core academic indicators. They would be 75% of our total. So we have our English Language Arts and Math Growth. Our high school graduation rate is a large one. Then we have our proficiency, which is percent meeting a benchmark in English Language Arts and Math. We have our science proficiency on the Illinois Science Assessment. And we have our English learner progress to proficiency. So this is a typical year, what they would include in that 75% of the total. And then we have our school quality indicators making up 25% of the total. And again, in a typical year, we would have that ninth grade students on track. We would have our chronic absenteeism and then the climate survey, the five essentials. The grayed-out bubbles that you see there are those areas that they are developing and they are intending to have become part of this 25% as soon as they're developed. So we have our pre-K2 indicator, elementary and middle school indicator, college and career readiness, which is actually close to being completed at the state level, but they're not ready to report that. We do actually have what they're calling optional reporting on that data at this time from schools. We anticipate that will be mandatory for next year. And then a fine arts indicator. So they have task forces at the state level that are in various stages of working forward on those indicators. And ultimately, when they're completed, the 25% making up school quality would be comprised of all of those pieces together. The weights that we would see, again, in a typical year, you see the actual numbers. And then what we've done is we've turned red and crossed out all the pieces of our summative designation indicators that had to change or be deleted because of COVID. You see the K8 band on the left and the 9 through 12 band on the right. And essentially, the only major indicator left is high school graduation rate, which is considered an academic indicator. All the rest of them had to be shifted or deleted simply because either it was statewide inconsistent data such as chronic absenteeism. Ninth grade on track, they deleted that for this year, not because we didn't report grades for ninth graders, but because the state had given us directives that students should not fail. If you recall all of our discussions from the spring, there was a lot of grade allowances made for students or incomplete grades that were given to students across the state. Those incomplete grades are in the process of being resolved. And so that ninth grade on track is just not factored in to the final. And then you see our assessments. So we had our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, our IAR. We had our SAT. And most of our main assessments were not given. So they are unable to calculate the proficiency. They're also unable to calculate growth. They were able to calculate English learner progress to proficiency because access was given last year, the access test. However, that still remains a small percentage of the total. This is the same as last year. It's just a reminder, in general, in a typical year as well as this year, just to remind us what students are included in the calculation. So students who've been in the school year, in the school district or their school for at least half the year, they define that as 134 days, groups with at least 20 students per indicator in five of eight indicators. So if we have a subgroup that only has 10 students, we might see reporting on that, but it would not be calculated into the total. And then you see the subgroups listed, and these are the same as last year. We have the major racial and ethnic groups. We have English learners, former English learners, because we know that even students that have reached proficiency and shifted out of formal English learner status will need to be monitored and to progress. Economically disadvantaged students. We did have one, last year, one shift just in the title of the designation. In the old days, it was students with IEPs. And now they do call students with IEPs or 504s, children with disabilities. So that indicator, if you were to look on the Illinois Report Cards, would be listed as CWD for children with disabilities. And then we have students formerly with disabilities. So students that had an IEP but no longer do. They are going to be tracking that data as well. And it was intended to be counted starting in 2020. And they have been tracking it. But again, the reporting, especially on those growth measures and academic measures, obviously for this year, is not valid. But we expect to see that moving into the future. So our main academic indicator that has been reported on for the state is our high school graduation rate. And I'm pleased to say that it has raised by 2% last year over prior years. And as you see, we've been fairly stable. Remember that we do have in our reporting some fairly strict rules to follow with graduation rate. So students that continue into our 18 to 22 program are not listed as graduates by state law. And so they continue on in the way that the state calculates these different graduation cohorts. They calculate as a four-year, a five-year, and a six-year. This is our four-year graduation rate for our typical students graduating in four years. A reminder of the summative designations and just what they are listed as according to the state. They did make two changes in names of the summative designations this year. So exemplary and commendable remain the same. Exemplary would be schools performing in the top 10% of schools statewide with no underperforming subgroup. Commendable schools are schools that still have no underperforming student groups, a graduation rate larger than 67%, but they might not be in the top 10% of the state. And then the name changes down below. In prior years, they had designated schools as either underperforming or lowest performing. They have changed the underperforming designation to targeted. And I'm pleased to say we have no schools currently listed in targeted or comprehensive or underperforming or lowest performing. But it is interesting, I think, the reason why they changed these names. So the state really received actually a lot of advocacy from school districts and other school groups, basically saying that the definition, which is no matter how high performing the school is overall, if one or more student groups is performing at or below the level of the all-students group for the lowest 5% of schools in the state, the entire school is labeled as underperforming. And the state really made the argument initially that we really have to draw attention to that because if a subgroup is underperforming, the school's not doing well. We need to focus on all kids. The advocacy ended up shifting that title to targeted because I think the state implicitly acknowledged that it's really, it's not accurate to state that an entire school... that an entire school is underperforming because of a subgroup, but they do require targeted assistance for some of those targeted subgroups. And then the same for lowest performing. The state really tried to avoid what they started to see as punitive labels because the whole point of the system is for improvement. So our summative designations are carried over from 2019. So the end result of not having the data indicators that the state needed for our academic indicators resulted in the state making the, they are giving summative designations. So if you go into the state system Illinois Report Card, you'll see that our schools all have designations. They are all equal to 2019. They just got carried forward. So we have two exemplary schools and that would be Leggie and McHaven Elementary Schools. And the remainder of all of our schools, we're proud to say, are commendable status. And so we are working forward. We'll be taking our assessments this year and we are really hoping that the state can include all of the data indicators for this year so that we can get that report card rolling again for next year in the same manner that we would be used to. I think the last piece is that anybody who wishes to find more information on the Illinois State Board of Education website, there is a dedicated Illinois Report Card page. They have updates, they have explanations of the data. Again, this year, it's a little bit more curtil than in a typical year. And the state has done a nice job of trying to explain those changes. The last piece that I'll say is typically at this board meeting, we would provide the board with PDFs. It's a little PDF at a glance for each school and we would then post those on our website. The state has actually not produced those this year. Actually, I went to click on them and it just says COVID-19. So essentially, there's not enough information for them to even make the PDF with the meaningful data points. However, in the system, in Illinois Report Card online, everything's in there. So someone can still click through all of the different tabs and can still look for what is there. And it is clearly designated as to, you know, this isn't here because of COVID or it's here, but you have to be careful because it may or may not be accurate. And then really, all schools are in the same boat with that. So this is a little bit of a different update on the ESA process and the school report card process. I think at this point, last year, we had a fairly robust data presentation related to, you know, our prior year's data and our state data in particular. So at this point, this is really all we have to present. What I will mention though, based on data, is that internally, we are monitoring all of our data. So while we don't have those state data points, we have our internal data points. We have all of our internal RTI data points. We are very vigorously monitoring our student attainment in their grades and in their classes, looking at the standards that they're meeting, looking at learning gaps. We just unfortunately don't have that public data available from the state. So with that, I will take any questions that we have.
Any questions or comments on the report card?
Just a comment, darn virus. That's it?
Have we thought, looked forward as to how this may impact us next year? Or will the measurements remain the same? Have they given any indication?
So my expectation, based on what the US Department of Education said, is that we will take the assessments across the state, that there will be a gap here, obviously, for every district. And I think the other just reasonable piece is that, and we're already doing a lot of work with our surrounding districts, our comparable districts, to say, you know, the state has not indicated that they're going to change any cutoffs or anything like that. They've really said full speed ahead. So the expectation would be that we would just pick up where we left off. Clearly though, in terms of analysis and what we do with it, how we identify gaps, you know, those internal processes would change because we definitely have to take a different approach, given what we've been dealing with.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for that presentation. And we'll move on to item 3. The Contract with the Consortium on Reaching Excellence.
All right, thank you for, oh, thank you for that. And this is my last item for tonight. We have a contract in front of you. We are actually, this is something that's actually been in the works, but we're excited about it because it is, it is more necessary than ever, we know, to help students with their gaps. The Consortium on Reaching Excellence is a group that has very, very core research-based literacy strategies for teachers. So the concept being that when we look at some of the basics, so we look at phonics, we look at some of the real building blocks of reading. We are looking at some very, very robust professional development to help our teachers, not just in the remote environment, but really across the board. This was really on the slate anyway. This is a train-to-trainer model, which is what requires the contract. It's a virtual contract, so we would be receiving this PDF virtually, getting trained, and then sharing that with all teachers in the district in order to make sure that, especially for our youngest readers, but really for all of our elementary students, we are able to provide the best, most up-to-date research-based literacy instruction. And so fairly straightforward contract. We're actually covering the cost of the contract, about $17,225 within our Title II federal grant, which is our professional learning grant. So it aligns well. We would just request a decade and a quarter for approval by the school board. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions or comments on the contract?
None here.
All right, then I would recommend we move that forward to the next board meeting. And if there's no objection, then we'll do.
I am. Okay, item 6.1 is our payables, purchase orders and press checks, accounts payable. Disbursements is listed. Is there any questions or concerns related to those items? Committee from the rest of the board? No? Okay, we will move those forward to the board for approval. Item 6.2, monthly fiscal update, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. Nothing really to add, other than that the fiscal memo is a little, a little longer than normal, simply because with the de restructuring, which we talked about at the last meeting, that officially closed on the $50.75 million bond issuance. The final closing memo prepared by PMA is attached to the fiscal memo, which outlines all the transactions. So did want to share that with the board. Other than that, nothing else to share. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Mark, concerning the bond refinanced at 50-plus million dollars, what do we, what did we calculate our final net savings to be related to that refinance?
Upwards of 9.3 million.
So translating, it's not an operating budget item that's our bond, an interest levy that occurs over the course of years repaying our debt. So over the next 20 or so years, there will be that 9-plus million dollars of savings to our taxpayers through those actions that were taken recently.
Yeah, and that's, you know, anywhere from a five and a half to about a 6% decrease in the debt service of the district. So over time, it's a pretty big savings to the district as well, from a percentage standpoint.
Yeah. So I'm glad we took action when we did on that stuff. So that's fine. Anybody have any, any committee have any comments on the monthly fiscal update? Any items that he had enumerated on there? The, into this next section then. Okay, and there's also the activity funds report. Any questions concerning the activity funds report? Okay, snap, and 6.3 is the revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Altmeier. Anything to highlight there?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, there you go. Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the September first quarter ending 2020 financial executive summary for the first quarter into the year. We're tracking on revenues, which based on the budget, you know, is no surprise. But we are running a little favorable on the benefits side, which we'll talk about here in a second, and running favorable on the purchase services and supplies in those areas as a result of really two things. Number one, being remote and also being, well, this time of year, we're generally running favorable on certain line items. So all of the favorability is not directly related to remote, but at this time, certainly there is some favorability there. From the health insurance standpoint, we saw another, you know, I call it favorable month. 553,000 for the month of September came in in total claims. So we continue to run favorable and it really appears to be a combination of, well, COVID, but that's kind of neutralized itself. We really think that the majority now, the favorability that we're seeing is because of fewer large costly claims in the pipeline. You know, we are seeing less large costly claims this claim year versus prior claim year, which, which is a good thing. Our employees are staying a little healthier, so that's a good thing. So from a dashboard perspective, no real surprises. You know, we expect some favorability on some line items, but from a comparison to prior year-to-date on several other line items, all line items are where they should be at this time of year. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
All right, so, excuse me, through September, tax collections, property tax collections. They, I think we're given certain extensions. How is that, has there been any radical difference there?
Yeah, I don't have the, the exact percentages in front of us, but you know, early on, my Director of Finance, Debbie and I were tracking, right? The fear was that we were going to slow down on collections as a result of the pandemic and unemployment increasing. But that really wasn't the case. I think at the end of the day, especially with our first, our first grouping of tax payments, you know, in the months of May, June, and July, we really didn't skip a beat. We were collecting almost as much as we were in prior year and were the same through September. So at the next board meeting, I can give an update with those exact percentages as to where we are. We're still waiting for the final settlements to come in from both Kane County and McHenry County, but those generally don't come in until, you know, several months from now.
Right.
And sometimes, and it's important to note this, that even if we're down a few percentage points on what, and we're not down a few percentage points, a few basis points, if you will, it could be the result of certificates of errors. It could be the result of PTAL adjustments. It could be the result of court orders that we don't necessarily see until we receive the detail behind that settlement sheet. And we only receive that detail, well, if we ask for it, which is, you know, which is how the whole Senate bill came about, was we did a little research behind what we were seeing in terms of settlements and certificates of errors and not collecting 100% of our property taxes. So unfortunately, for the 2019 tax levy year, until we get that detail, we really can't handle it.
Yep. All right. Anyone else have any questions concerning the revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Altmeier? Okay, that will move to item 6. Four, which is the revenue contract. There's one contract there to remember for Martin Elementary. Any questions or concerns from the committee concerning that? Well, good, all right. We'll move that forward to the board for approval. Item 6.5 is the levy hearing, Mr. Altmeier.
Well, thank you very much. This is, you know, standard operating procedure for us now and we're going to talk a little bit more about this with our next agenda item. But each year, we do hold a levy hearing. Now, we're not required to hold a levy hearing unless our tax extension exceeds 105% of prior year's tax extension. And so when I go through the preliminary tax levy, you will find that, well, we're not there. We're not above 105%. And so for the last, well, since I've been here, we've never really been above 105%. And, but we still, as a district, feel like we should have a levy hearing. We should present the levy because it is such a big piece of the funding of the district. And certainly, it's a large impact to our community, public taxpayers as well. So with that, this is a recommendation to hold that tax levy hearing on December 17th. It's a December board meeting. So we ask that the board approve that recommendation.
Okay. Committee, good with that? Good with it? Any other board members have any questions on why we go through that without being required to do it? You're all good with that? We're all good with that? Okay, that's fine. We'll push that forward to the next board meeting for approval. And then to 6.6, which is the preliminary tax levy, Mr. Altmeier.
Okay, well, I have a little more to say on this, so I'm going to make sure I can breathe there a little better. You know, this is a very important piece of what we do on an annual basis, is the Board of Education approving our annual tax levy. And as part of the process, we are to provide the board, well, a preliminary look at the levy. And we do that one month ahead of the tax levy hearing. So, so here we go. Administration with this memo is recommending extending the 2020 levy for tax payments due in '21 with a consumer price index of 2.3% in accordance with the property tax extension law limitation, or limitation law, excuse me, with CPI at 2.3% for levy year '20, including the preliminary estimated new construction. And that's very important, we did receive preliminary EAV reports, estimated assessed values and preliminary new construction numbers from both Kane County and McHenry County. The district will extend approximately 2.09 million in additional property taxes in accordance with PTAL. Now, a lot of that number is based on that new construction estimate, which we'll talk about here in a second. Looking at EAV in the district's new construction, or the new construction within the district's boundaries, using the McHenry and Kane County Assessor estimated EAV reports with new construction, 2020 EAV before border review, right? Because border review will bring that number down a little bit, is expected to increase 4.1% to over $1.5 billion. And that's an increase from last year's EAV of 1.45 billion. If you recall, last year at 1.45 billion, boy, that was the first time we, we finally exceeded. We were at 1.45 billion, but we were at 1.45 billion in 2009. So it took us almost 10 years to get back to what we lost when the real estate market tanked. And now we're starting to build onto that to 1.5 billion with a 4.1% increase. And again, that's including new construction. If we back out new construction, which I'm going to talk about here in a second, that would be an EAV increase of 3.3% approximately. New construction came in pretty favorable. Again, it's an estimate. It's an estimate from Kane County as well as McHenry County. New construction is coming in at 12.29 million. Last year, if you recall, new construction was 9.74 million. The good news behind that 12.2 million is, well, mostly it's McHenry County and I trust the McHenry County numbers more so than the Kane County. And the other good news behind that 12.29 million, not only is most of it McHenry County, but most of it, approximately 78% of it, is residential new construction. And we know there's a lot of new construction going on with, for residential, especially within McHenry County. So hopefully, those numbers hold because that's a big, important number. Looking at EAV and new construction independently by county, Kane County representing approximately 20% of the overall EAV, is estimated to increase 2% from 297 million to 303 million of total EAV. And new construction increasing, well, $100,000, again, it's an estimate, to 1.9 million versus last year's $1.8 million of new construction. The majority of that new construction for Kane County is commercial property. We would hope and expect to receive more, but knowing the challenges we are having with Kane County assessment and assessors, it's not surprising, but it's worrisome still to me. So we are going to look into that a little more. McHenry County's EAV, including current year's estimated new construction, is estimated to increase 3.6% from 1.1 billion to 1.19 billion. billion. Um, estimated new construction last year was 7.9 million. This year, 10.3 million, driven 100% by, uh, the preliminary residential new construction, uh, of 9.5 million. Um, so how does that impact tax rates? Uh, talking about operating funds cap tax rates, the tax rate is expected to decrease by 79 basis points, uh, primarily driven by an increase in assessed value, of course, uh, to approximately 4.4, excuse me, 4.54 from last year's $4.59 per $100 VAV. Want to get into the detail. Um, now it's time to talk, and this is kind of important for the board, and this is the time we talk about ballooning our levy because we balloon our levy so that we don't leave dollars on the table, and we balloon our levy just in case that new construction number of 12-plus million, um, if it comes in higher, if it comes in at 15 million or 18 million after final EAV and new construction is determined by both counties. And so historically, we have ballooned the levy 1% to 1.5%. And last year, we increased the balloon from 1% to 1.5% to cover us for new construction. So within the memo you're seeing today and the proposal by administration is to, again, increase the levy by 1.5%, balloon the levy by 1.5%, which would cover, cover us, uh, for additional new construction of approximately 22.6 million dollars. Now, that's a lot and it's highly unlikely, um, but it's kind of what we have done in prior years. So administration is making that recommendation to move forward with that. With that balloon, the additional balloon of 1.5%, you know, we talked about the truth in taxation, and truth in taxation is if your total levy is in excess of 105% of prior year, you are required to have a levy hearing. Well, even with that 1.5% balloon, we are at 1.4, 104.6%, which is fine. We're not required to have that levy hearing, but we're still going to have that levy hearing, but I did want to point that out, just so we knew what the numbers and percentages were for all of those following on this very technical levy presentation. Um, so with that, um, I asked the board to approve this preliminary levy, but I also asked the board to approve this preliminary levy, knowing, I mean, the importance of it, um, knowing that, well, we're, we're in a time of, of rising costs because of costs that we are incurring because of COVID. We're in a time of which, uh, the fair tax for the state, the amendment didn't go through. And because it didn't go through, we are highly certain, highly certain that, well, state funding in Illinois is going to be cut. And with state funding being cut in Illinois, um, and the fact that we are at 67% of adequacy, and with regard to the evidence-based funding here at the state, we are a tier-two borderline tier-one district. Um, knowing all of those things, the importance of that 2.3% has never been actually more important. So I encourage and, uh, ask the board to approve this preliminary levy to be presented again in December at the tax levy hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a tactical question here. I was just trying to make sure I understood the difference between what's in pages. There's two versions of that worksheet. One comes to 79.8 and one's at the 28.
Uh, there's two versions of, I'm sorry, there's two versions of the calcu- there's two versions of the calculation we provided. One that is ballooned and then one that is not ballooned, so that you could actually see the actual
I got you.
extension that we are estimating. In other words, that would, with that new construction, that outlines, uh, the increase in total property taxes that we're expecting, uh, which I noted very early on, uh, which is just, just over $2 million.
So the 80.8 is the balloon version, the 79.8 is the non?
That'd be correct.
Okay.
Um, I think I had a question mark going back to, uh, when you were giving an estimate of the increase to a homeowner, and it said it was a $200,000 homeowner, it was like 80 some bucks?
Yes, I'm sorry. And, and I failed to bring that up, and I usually bring that up at the very end of the presentation, and I did not come back to that. Um, yeah, a- and we qualify this, right? This is just fairly an estimate. It's based on preliminary new construction. It's based on, um, if in fact, we never had any shifting of EAVs, but we know homeowners' assessed values increase and some decrease, and, and we have two counties, and there's, there's apportionment between the counties. Um, but at 2.3% of homeowner with a $200,000 home, market value home, will see an approximate, with that 2.3% increase, an approximate $81 increase in their property tax. But taxpayers do need to be aware that shifting of assessments, um, as well as fluctuations in the apportionment between what is being collected from Kane County and McHenry County can have significant impact on that number. It's just, if everything were to stay exactly the way it was today, a $200,000 homeowner would see an approximate $81 increase.
Right. Again, the $200,000 homeowner, that's fair value. Their assessed value would be at a third of that.
Correct.
A third of that at the actual tax rate, if you're looking at what that raw percentage increases to their, from their existing, uh, they're getting taxed at a little bit below, below 5, 5 bucks a hundred right now. It's, it's, it's going to go down. 454, 455, is that what you have there?
Correct, 454.
Yeah. All right. Trying to do the math in my head.
Again, and, and this is the preliminary. When, when the final extension does come out, and the final EAV is determined, and the final new construction is determined, we always see a fluctuation, um, in that rate, um, up or down. Again, it, these are very preliminary numbers in the county.
Yeah, your number should be in the, well, be in the realm. Um, I think the other thing to highlight is the bond rate, we're paying back, the bond extension is about 11 million, which I think this ultimately, with all this restructuring we're doing, that's kind of like going to be our top repayment number for a while now, I think, right? This is...
That would be correct.
Yeah, this is kind of the last year of the, on the higher end of bond repayment, and then it's going to start.
Well, no, actually, we do, we do have, we do, because we're behind on a levy year, we do have a few more years of a 3.5, approximately, 3.5% increase
Okay.
in our bond and interest repayment, and then we will see that, uh, come down.
All right. But the tax rate has remained relatively, I mean, it's flat from the prior year. It says like 73 cents a hundred, um, which is, it remains consistent.
Correct.
From prior year. That works out okay. So, all right. Um, again, no, it's a lot of numbers, a lot of pretty dry. So does anybody have any questions concerning what Mr. Altmeier just presented and has proposed, um, how we would levy, some concerns about, again, uh, the balloon levy is there to protect, um, ballooning in excess of what we already know, the, the, the new construction increase has been given to us because it's never final till we actually get it next year, actually. Um, so we, we do that to protect ourselves in case they screwed up, gave us bad preliminary numbers. Uh, so does anybody have any objections to ballooning to the degree we're ballooning? Um, Mr. Altmeier laid out what the, quantified what the dollars amount that could, they could be wrong, and it still wouldn't negatively affect our, our, um, our, our ability to, uh, to levy. So do we have any concerns about how, how that was derived at? If it's too high, too aggressive, or anything like that?
Definitely not too high.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It's consistent with what we've, the approach we've taken, and it's, uh, it's fairly, compared to how some other districts go about it, they, they go a lot higher with their balloon levies and scare the, the Jesus out of everybody who doesn't understand how this stuff works. So, uh, it, it's, it's within the realm. Sean, do you have any, uh, questions or concerns related to it?
No.
All right. Anyone else on the board have any, anything they want to throw at Mr. Altmeier related to it? Okay. Well, I think we're, we're satisfied with the, uh, with the approach, so we'll move that forward, uh, as presented at our next board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you.
Presentation. Um, on item seven, human resources, Mr. Gentry.
Okay, we have, uh, one item on the agenda. It's the monthly human resource update. Uh, Dr. Zir.
Good evening. Um, the monthly human resource update, just some highlights going on with human resources. Um, kicked off open enrollment this year for 2021, so we wrapping that up here, um, at the end of next week. Also wrapped up our onsite, uh, wellness screenings. Uh, we've now moved to, uh, where they're only available offsite through the end of November. So hopefully we'll be able to report back in December on the amount of participants that we had in that. Um, we're over 600 right now. I might believe it's the last count, but we hope for that number to go up a little bit more, um, based on the amount of people on the health insurance plan that participate. Uh, one note I did want to make, and there have been, uh, reports across the country, um, school districts, businesses of fraudulent unemployment claims. So just wanted to make the board aware, um, that is happening here. Um, we have put together a process, um, to help our employees, uh, through that. Um, CLIC has also assisted us, our liability insurance, with some information, and, um, IDS, IDES has also come up with a streamlined process. So, um, as of today, we've had 26 employees, um, affected across the district, and, you know, we've seen it kind of tail off on this past week. We were getting about, um, two to three, three to four, you know, per day there for a while, but, uh, we're managing that, reaching out to employees, helping them through the steps, uh, who they need to contact to get, um, everything remedied on that. So I know Mr. Altmeier and I were in an email from a CFO from a, with a district that was further to the east, and it sounded like they were having a little bit more of a problem than what we were with it. Um, so it's, it's not consistent across the districts. The one thing that is consistent is that it's happening. Um, luckily for us, um, when we went through the unemployment process over the summer, we moved everything, um, online, and so it made it very easy for us to contest these immediately when they come in. So that's one of the first things in the human resources office is check in the morning and throughout the day. Um, if a fraudulent claim had come in, we contested immediately, and, uh, we contact our employee, take them through those steps. So, uh, at our level, uh, we think we have that under control. We just wanted to give the board an update that, um, that is affecting, um, employees here a little bit.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll comment on it because I'm seeing it in my practice with clients. Um, and it's, yeah, the IDS just sent out, I just saw, they just sent out a notice to employers. Um, and I'm, I, I'm struck by where, where have they gotten all this personal information on these people? And it's just gets, I want to say, it's probably not, it's, as you're saying, it's not because they hacked the school district. They, I, I think they've hacked the IDS. The IDS doesn't seem to be very...
CLIC, CLIC made a comment on that in one of their communications this week, thinking it may be from hacks that have taken place, um, previously, um, where that data is still there. Um, whether it was credit bureaus, you know, things of that nature, um, they're thinking it's a, a larger, um, infiltration at some level, but obviously they haven't been able to pinpoint where that is. But they have a lot of information and a lot of detailed information about folks whoever has gotten.
Yeah, no, it's, it's scary. I mean, the people I've seen are actually the owners of the business who would obviously never be making a claim for unemployment. Um, they're employing themselves, uh, so it's, it's, we're, A, it's so obvious. So it's, it's, yeah, it's a fairly, it seems to be fairly sophisticated.
Yeah, we, we've seen it with employees who, you know, are working for us now, but then also if they were in a previous district, um, it also popped up on, um, an unemployment claim in the previous district too. So those districts have reached out to their former employees. Um, we've seen a few of those, or people who haven't worked for us in a while, and so we've sent that information out also. But, um, yeah, they're kind of hitting essentially everywhere you've possibly been employed.
But it's not limited to, it's not a school district thing. It's a
Oh, correct. It's not a school district.
statewide issue for all employers. So anybody who's involved in this stuff just needs to keep their eyes open. It's, it's a huge issue.
So, yeah, unemployment in terms of the HR office, few and far between, did we have claims coming through? And it's become, you know, much more significant now, especially with some of the laws that were passed in the summer concerning unemployment and, um, and obviously dealing with this. So it's, um, we, we feel like we've got it under wraps right now and able to respond in a very timely manner when someone's impacted. That's it for the updates. Mr. Gentry?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that would, uh, move on to, uh, item eight, building and grounds. Mr. Troy?
Thank you. Um, equally a light month, uh, just one item here, eight dot one, O N M Office. Uh, Mr. Altmeier, anything to highlight on there?
Yes, thank you. Um, soon we'll be seeing the, uh, updates on solar go away, I think, because we're at the point now where we're down to a very minor punch list, and, uh, the system is operational. There's a little tuning going on of some of the inverters right now. Uh, but it's, uh, it's, uh, very well along. Uh, our team in the O N M department met with, uh, our, our coach from the Strategic Energy Management cohort on a pilot program for water and the energy conservation in Tua High School, and did a detailed, uh, review on all the sources of water consumption and, uh, uh, more, more to follow there on opportunities that, uh, that will develop. Uh, I wanted to bring the board's attention. It's not in here, but we just released, we've got the documents together. Our one large project, uh, for the coming, uh, summer is, uh, the next phase of earth replacement at Huntley High School, and the bid documents were released earlier this week. Uh, we expect to open bids on December 8th at this time. Hopefully we'll have fair weather on November 20th for the pre-bid meeting when we walk the road. Um, the last thing I want to bring to the board's attention, again, something not on here, is we've been working very hard in our department to try to, uh, resolve a challenge that, uh, we've recognized for a while now, and that is that, um, the digital video, uh, building automation system, the control system, uh, that's been the source of most of our, uh, successes with energy conservation, uh, since we enhanced everything back in 2010, uh, is a, what we have is, uh, Niagara Tritium version 3.8, AX 3.8, that is, and, uh, that version is, uh, uh, now 10 years old, and that hardware is, uh, on the verge of being unsupported. We've had problems with it, uh, things like, uh, boiler plant controls that would not restart after six cold boots, uh, some scary moments in our management of the operations of the facility to just try to preserve and protect them and keep the ventilation system working. So, uh, we've been, uh, we, we've been recognizing this, uh, uh, need to get to the four-point, I think they're up to, they're beyond 4.3 now, um, when 4.0 was introduced, uh, about five or six years ago. Uh, so, uh, I think we've got our due service out of the one we've got. We've been talking to the CTS about this. In their proposal that they provided with the last, uh, RFP for Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract, they actually listed an opportunity, uh, called Orchestrate, which is a software that they could, uh, put into our system, which would, uh, help us, uh, further with our demand control ventilation. Uh, so I've asked them to comp, to, to deevaluate that deeply and, uh, compliment that opportunity for savings, uh, by looking at enhancing all these, uh, uh, 2010 version, uh, 3.8 controllers. And, uh, they have come up with some numbers. Uh, Mark and I have evaluated it's, uh, if it was all at once, it would be, uh, a little under a half a million dollars. Uh, they told me that, um, if we could get this done, uh, the order in before December, there would be an opportunity to save about 5% because there's a price increase going on the hardware, uh, which is about 5% of the cost. And, um, uh, in, in, in talking to fiscal, uh, there's an interest to look at it more from a two-year program. Uh, they have told me in their, in their information that they're sure they could guarantee an energy savings of, uh, this would return on investment in less than 10 years. Uh, they haven't put an exact number at this yet, but I'm supposed to have numbers in my office tomorrow, uh, for a 10-year, I mean, a two-year cycle of a project, uh, which, uh, it's our goal to present as an action item at next week's meeting and see if we can take advantage of some of that, uh, uh, price escalation avoidance. uh, which, uh, it's our goal to present as an action item at next week's meeting and see if we can take advantage of some of that, uh, uh, price escalation avoidance. Sorry for the short notice. You happy to answer any questions about things in the O N M department otherwise? Well?
Okay, question, please. I have an unrelated question.
Sure, go ahead.
So Doug, and I can't recall, we may have already done something, something concerning this, but i- as it relates to air quality in our classrooms and our buildings, um, for HVAC for when the kids, uh, and then obviously the teachers are in the classroom all together. What, what have we done or what is there available that enhances the, uh, air quality and circulations?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to talk about this subject. Uh, it's, uh, close, near to my heart.
I'm going to get you started is what you're telling me. You did, you just got me.
But tell me when to stop.
All right. I've got my timer.
Mark, let me know, I'm at the one minute mark, please. Um, so there's a lot of rhetoric in, uh, the CDC documents, there's been IDPH about this matter. And, um, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's several components. One way to clean the air, uh, one way to increase the amount of fresh air in facilities. We are very fortunate in District 158 that our facilities are relatively new compared to most school facilities. And, uh, we have the opportunity to, without much, which we've already done, uh, and as soon as we read about this, is, uh, to increase the amount of fresh air in the space. Uh, typically, rule of thumb is, uh, is, uh, 20% of the air that's being brought into the space is from outside the building. That's typical rule of thumb, and we've got minimum set points on our systems, uh, that we've had. Uh, we have also demand control ventilation, which measures the amount of carbon dioxide in the space, which gives the, the, the operation of the system a gauge of how many occupants are in the facility, um, to know how much fresh air to bring in. It's a recognized standard of the public health department, but you limit the, this is before COVID, mind you now, that you limit the amount of carbon dioxide measured in the space, which is that gauge of oxygen, to no more than 1,000th part of a million. Uh, we, we are at that level in that particular point, but then also we read in that it says, you, at this point in time, we should abandon that. We should, we should just bring in as much fresh air as possible, period, never regulate down from there. Uh, we have elected right now to set the minimum fresh air in our, in our spaces to 50%. We've, we've multiplied by two and a half. Now, mind you, our facilities are relatively new, and that's a control sequence that we can easily do. There aren't many facilities that can do that. We're very fortunate there. And now the, the thing that, that we're worried about, that we're watching closely is, uh, when you bring in that much fresh air and you bring it into an air handler that has a coil in it with water that we've heated, it could freeze if it gets extremely cold outside. Uh, we do have, uh, control sequences to protect the unit from freezing. It's called a free stab sequence of operation. And I told the staff that if we start to have free stab trips, uh, what we should do is take it, uh, like a margin of like 10% of the time, back down under those weather conditions to see where our, where we need to be to make sure we don't actually freeze the water in the coil and burst the coil. Um, I, I can't say there's probably many school districts that have the kind of equipment we do. Most school districts are typically unit ventilators in the classroom. Ours are large commercial central air handlers in almost all of our spaces, uh, except the very, very oldest section of the Huntley High School. Uh, what we have there is we have actually, uh, we've put in some planning exhaust systems that are very robust. We have to be careful because if we set them too high, it'll slam the door shut when you open it on the buildings at times of year. We got to be careful about that. But we, we do pull in plenty of fresh air there as well. Um, and that is, that is, uh, one key thing we, we do right now. Uh, we, we have looked at, at other opportunities, but, um, um, we think we've, we've made, at this point, we've, we've done a, we've done a big, a big service to make sure that, that, that we get as much fresh air in the buildings as possible.
Yep, I appreciate you taking the time to explain it. Thank you.
Any questions, uh, anything else regarding the earlier report? Okay, thank you very much for the report. Moving forward then.
Thanks, sir. Leslie, you have anything on legislative? I'm sorry, regional. He is, it's not stated clearly. Okay, was there anything on legislative?
Uh, so, and then for more legislative updates, um, I think Mr. Altmeier mentioned this, you know, the fairer tax failing. Um, I think, you know, our governor's saying, you know, there's going to be some painful cuts. We'll have to see what comes from that. Um, you know, our, as far as the local elections, a lot of, you know, new officials, uh, have stepped into the role. Again, that could bring changes to our, our community. Um, and then, um, I think Leslie can attest to this, but so far the veto session for this month is still, um, in order, so, um, we'll have to see what next month brings for that as well.
Okay, right. So quantifiably, I mean, again, what have, you heard the governor has kind of thrown out, like either 5 or 10% decreases to most areas, which would include education, which is one of those big budget items, correct?
Yep.
And it also probably includes a overall tax increase to the entire state, I believe, a 1% increase is what he had mentioned, correct? So, yep, those are, uh, what they're staring at. That's what we're staring at, and then obviously all of that has an effect on how we'll proceed, um, going forward with future budgets, future, uh, a lot of things, so, huge effect. I don't know if anybody had anything else related to legislative? Okay, uh, we'll move on to 10, which is, uh, Board of Education. We have, uh, minutes prepared for various meetings. Had three of them in the, uh, month of October. Um, is there any questions or concerns, concerns with those minutes? Okay, if not, we'll move those forward to the board for approval in our next meeting. So item, uh, 10 that two is 2020 delegate assembly. So, um, obviously unlike all past years where we would be going down for the, uh, Triple I conference, uh, that, that's not happening this year, like, most everything's not happening this year. Um, so, but we still have, uh, um, the I F B, Illinois Association of School Boards has put together their 2020 Resolutions Committee Report. So, um, we're going to have to make decisions by, uh, next meeting as to, uh, what we support and what we don't support as a board. Um, tonight, kind of just briefly go over, uh, an overview of these questions that are being presented. See if anybody has any questions concerning them, I'll, I'll have discussion on it. Um, and then we'll get out a spreadsheet, um, so that everybody can, uh, vote, uh, put it in there for next meeting, and then we'll consolidate that vote in our next meeting, uh, as far as those proposals. So I'll go through these, um, try and do them quickly. Like I said, I really only, I'm only looking to solicit any discussion on anything that you think is, um, value merit, uh, a level of discussion. There's a lot of, um, you know, items that interest certain districts that might not really be applicable to a district like ours or might not even be appropriate in some cases for school districts to be even getting involved in. But districts will need to take on all kinds of things, so. The first one is financing and public education concerning the loan program. Uh, I think that one in summary was just to allow access to low-cost loans, um, on there. Did anybody have any questions related to that one? All right, and I'll let you guys, like I said, I'll, we'll put out the, uh, questions to each of you to fill out on the spreadsheet and you can respond. The next item was a legislative activity, uh, had to do with gun storage. Um, didn't, uh, I know that was an item that, uh, the Resolution Committee didn't think that school districts really need to be involved in. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that one. If not, okay. Um, the next item is school report card. Anybody want to have any kind of discussion on the school report card that's a resolution that was presented? Okay, um, pre-K teacher licensure for board employee relations, anything there of discussion matter? No. Um, teacher shortage, anything related there? Uh, e-learning and election day, just obviously came up. Um, so many things. Is there any e-learning? Not. Item seven was local, local control pandemic. Anything to discuss out loud there? Okay, item eight was local control pandemic also, another district had some thoughts on that. Okay, um, and then those reaffirm, reaffirmations of existing positions, they're, they're just items you can go through on your own. I mean, they're just things we've seen before. All these other items were all brand new. So I just thought if anybody wanted to talk about those out loud for now, can save your opinions for your voting, um, at our next meeting. So, that, um, you know, real true, true discussion or debate on these for right now. We'll just answer as we see fit, then we'll discuss it at our next meeting. So we'll move on to item, that, that three.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, do we have a delegate that's been designated?
You know what, we, we don't have a delegate, and I, I, I thought we would just by default use you, Mr. Troy, but, uh, I don't know. Well, first, I have my, I, 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 I understand, I understand, but there is a need, but there is a need.
That line up November 7th, yeah, we haven't been able to meet in time to decide that.
Yeah, right. So the, no, there is a need to have one. Um, and, uh, I know you've served us a couple of times in that capacity. I think Mr. Gentry has done it also. Um, I don't know if there's anybody else who'd like to do it instead of Mr. Troy. Mr. Troy always serves us well, so if you're willing to do it.
I'm, I'm willing unless somebody else wants to, uh, have, have this.
Give it a whirl.
Attention and honor.
So is there anybody else who'd, who want to try and step up and do that? If not, we appreciate you stepping forward as we all, as we all step back, um, for you to do that.
By the take one for the team.
Yes, no, thank you. Thank you, Paul. We appreciate that very much. So yes, you will be our delegate for the other segment. So thank you for reminding us. All right, so then on to 10, that three, uh, IHSA basketball season. Dr. Rose is going to discuss.
All right, thank you. Um, so the IHSA, so earlier this week, I'm going to start by breaking this down into a series of events that occurred last week, um, that, that, I mean, in the school districts, high school districts with a high school, really spiraling throughout the state. Um, I want to break those events down. Uh, as I shared all of the supporting documentation for you, is, um, I want to guide this discussion as an act of some guidance from the school board. We have a, you know, a decision that needs to be made in terms of the direction that we go with the school district, um, that directly impacts some of our, our student applicants, but has a major, um, major liability in terms of, uh, obviously is a, in direct relation to, uh, the school board, uh, school board action. So on October 27th, the Illinois Department of Public Health updated, uh, sports, uh, sports labels, and then changed the basketball designation label to a high risk, meaning that it is, it may only have no contact practices and drills, um, only. Uh, disallowing it from live scrimmages and competition. Um, the next day on October 28th, the IHSA, which is the Illinois High School Association that manages our athletics, is not a, a governmental organization. Their role is a, uh, their organization basically schedules high school athletic and runs the state series. Um, on October 28th, IHSA released their intention to move forward with the schedule as planned, defying the governor and, um, the Illinois Department of Public Health, stating that they have accounted for and mitigated all of their health risks. Uh, you may recall that the IHSA, uh, following, following the spring sport season, late in the summer, I, the IHSA entered in a collaborative relationship with IHTH, where they began collaborating on a much greater level in making their decisions to ensure and host that sports season this full year could occur. Um, so the IHSA did, uh, what they believe were, mitigated all of the, the health concerns that existed around these, more physically contact, uh, physical contact, sports to have at a greater level of physical contact. Uh, those concern obviously being football, so it is a football season fall, uh, basketball, wrestling, hockey being of, of major concern. And most of the others you saw in memo are of lower risk. So October 28th, the IHSA came out and said that we intend to move forward with our basketball season as scheduled. Um, the next day on October 29th, uh, the Illinois State Board of Education, uh, issued a statement by way of Dr. Ayala, the safety superintendent. Uh, the school districts are expected to follow the Illinois Department of Public Health safety measures, uh, focused on student safety. Um, on that same day, we received a legal analysis from Jay Green, one of our, um, one of our firms, a member of Miller Home Trade. Uh, the analysis argued that, that an argument exists that the Illinois State Board of Education sanctions could impact our education-based funding gap. Uh, it, it could impact us as a recognized school status, although it's a, it's not a possibility. It's more, it's more unlikely, but he, he argued that it is a possibility and we should weigh that, um, and take that into consideration when making this decision. That same day, uh, we received communication from our CLIC liability cooperative by way of, of Saicamol Law Firm, that the, the IHSA does not have liability coverage, um, for COVID-related lawsuits to cover members. So therefore each member who chooses to play will not be covered by the IHSA, uh, or a local liability carrier, carrier, meaning, um, that any lawsuit brought against a school district will be paid for on local funds. We would not have, um, our liability insurance to cover legal fees or damages that, that are found. Um, and CLIC formally recommends following the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines. So I don't share those as, as by way of, of guiding your decision or your regard to discussion. Uh, my intention of sharing that is to, to give a, the series of events, because the IHSA, as I also shared with you, shares their argument of why they feel that it's important to, um, to, to move forward. Obviously there is a social emotional component for our students being active, being engaged, um, uh, in sports and athletics, uh, which we, we choose them. Uh, but there are, there are some serious concerns. As you know, we have made a decision to, uh, to follow the local health department in terms of not being in question in person from school, uh, and this decision, in my opinion, falls in exactly the same category. So given the nature of the decision and potential liability impact, um, I just, I welcome the feedback and discussion from the school board and the direction that you believe that we should go as, should we find ourselves in a position where liability is of this kind of a concern? Obviously we're talking about local funds, or we could be talking about funds in the hundreds of thousands, two millions of dollars. Uh, it's a serious concern, obviously, uh, definitely. So any guidance that you could offer, I welcome that feedback, and we will address that direction.
All right, so first of all, let me get it straight. You know, up until now, the IHSA, IHSA has kind of ruled the day on all this stuff statewide. And all of a sudden now they've kind of more or less said, here, you guys decide on your own, at your level, whether you want to have something like this.
Well, I, I think they, they forced us into that position by taking a stance of, um, we're going to do it our way, even though you said we should be camped with it. Cause the governor and the Department of Public Health saying this is not safe, you shouldn't do it. And they're saying, no, we're going to do it, therefore we have to make a decision about what our activities.
Somehow now to them basketball's okay, but not football and wrestling?
Well, the governor, the governor made the decision about football. I think the, the, they collaboratively made decisions, we actually did that back. They collaboratively made the decision to move football to the springs. The football season is still intact.
Right, in the spring.
It's just hasn't began.
Right, exactly, but, I, right. Right, exactly, but, I, right, correct.
And the governor, um, is, is, is in his mind, I mean, and made a statement that basketball season should be moved to the spring as well.
Correct. All right. Um, so, everybody's thoughts on this?
The, the discussion and decision really comes down to how much liability is the district willing to incur should we find ourselves in that position?
Yeah, I mean, up, up until.
Not playing basketball, we all learn this with basketball. It's more about how, what, where's that level of, of liability or how is we going to?
Yeah, I mean, we're completely on our own.
Right.
Something, something happens, completely on our own. I mean, I, I'll leave an address that is going beyond basketball. We, we had a couple of commentators and I've heard this in past public comments and I'll, I'll address it. People have accused and have been concerned that we were listening to lawyers about being in school. And we, we haven't talked to lawyers at all about being in school at all. Um, however, we have consulted concerning this specific matter on basketball. Um, and specifically because our, our liability insurance carrier has specifically said that we'll be excluded from any kind of coverage. Um, and so when you're in a circumstance like this, yeah, you, you gotta really tread pretty lightly in regards to, you know, what, what you're going to do. And again, I think our attorney has, has recommended, correct, that the press is not a good, good thing to be going forward with from our, our level when you don't have this kind of coverage. And secondly, am I recalling correctly that we, I mean, we've had some student athletes at some levels, um, contract COVID and a couple more freshman basketball, I believe?
Oh, that's correct. Our, our basketball and football team are currently under quarantine finishing up early, early this week or early next week.
Yeah, I mean, having participated in basketball from the sixth grade through playing in high school. Basketball's a contact sport. It's, it's a sport you're on top of people on, um, consistently. Um, and so I, I would have a lot of concerns related to going forward with that. And I don't know what anybody else thinks about that. I mean, I don't know if anybody has any.
Let's question on the insurance coverage though. Is it? Probably not a, a question you can answer precisely, but you know, over the span of a long, long range of time, have we utilized that insurance from bad things happening and having that covered by the IHSA policy or the?
Um, I, I would refer to Mr. Almeyer, is it time a different, not in three years that I've had this meeting? Have we had to do that?
At that one.
Have we made a liability claim, uh, due to athletics?
We have not. I mean, we have not. Nothing that has gone through, um, you know, CLIC or any of our liability insurance providers. I mean, certainly we have, you know, administ on the course and spring needs and ACLs and those things, but those things obviously do not go through our health insurance. They do not go through our liability insurance. Um, but we have not had any of those things come through our providers.
And then any sense of what abroad, like just from a insurance risk pool standpoint, like how, how of common is a claim on this type of stuff? Just.
Are you talking on, I mean, I don't know. Have you ever seen COVID? I mean, this, I mean, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about somebody getting COVID, going, infecting somebody and somebody died. Because they came in contact with somebody who had participated in sports that we allowed to have. That's what we're talking about, plain and simple. Here, so that's the liability potentially.
No, it's not just that though. It's that and everything else that could have happened before, right?
Um.
COVID and many other things or?
Well, I mean, the many other things.
Our liability insurance would still be in place in terms of, um, like playing court.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
COVID is a specific exclusion. That's all, that's the only change is.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't, yeah, I didn't mean that.
I missed.
Understood how that was being applied, right? Like you would know.
Does that say COVID-related losses?
Okay.
Dr. Rose, is this specifically done for or are we on our own across the board? That says no COVID-related, but is it specifying if it, if it happens during the fourth or extracurricular activities or is it a creep?
In this situation, it is specific to athletics because the IHSA is, uh, is, is defined or is going against what the Illinois Department of Public Health is saying. So by following the, and, and by going against the recommendation of the statewide health expert organization, we would be potentially willful and wanton and therefore moving away and, 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 uh, forfeiting our toward immunity and, and being negligent is what it essentially is saying.
Yeah.
So by, by willfully saying we are going to ignore the recommendation of the, the state health officials and playing basketball against their recommendation, we are, uh, we're being, we're being negligible in our actions. Therefore we're liable for anything that happens, um, related to COVID, uh, with our student athletes or their families as a result of contact with those student athletes. That was one of the examples that, um, that was given in, in one of the, the legal briefs was, you know, talking about waivers, that that would be a likely, uh, scenario that, that schools would, would, would use. If a parent could sign a waiver for.
They could sign a waiver for that kid. The problem is that you don't have a waiver from anybody they ever come in contact with. If they contracted it through that, it was strange.
They almost acknowledged, they, the waiver of thumb, you know, is the, you know, the, you know, the risk. Yeah, that. So, but I'm just, I guess my question is with regards to all recommendations that are coming.
I think, I think I know where you're going with this.
And I don't want, I mean, of course, I don't want you to touch that right now. So that's, I just.
It's in the exact, it's in the exact same category. If, if we ignore a, uh,
A guideline.
Recommendation or a guideline, if the, the Department of Public Health, then our, our liability coverage is absolutely at risk. If something should happen and, and all, you know, the, the, our, our local tax office and our local reserves are.
Are at risk.
At risk in terms of then future school district function for students to help with the.
Dr. Rose, what, um, you mentioned that IHSA has some extra mitigations. Do you know what they are?
Um, they were outlined, they're outlined in the NF speech as they talked about, uh, some specific mitigations that they were outlining in terms of, uh, space on coaches being placed in a certain location, uh, limiting the attendees and the referees and the head coach. Uh, from each team with the East Coast standing at the center of circle, uh, all individuals ensuring six feet of separation, uh, suspending of handshakes, improving, following, improving conference, uh, specific social distancing measures on team benches. Uh, official stables and, and actions such as that, just in terms of the function of the game or if they're going to eliminate the, um, the.
Jump ball.
Ball tosses.
Jump ball.
You know, jump ball. And they were like, it's the visiting, the visiting team start play that way. So they were making some modifications. There was a sanitation of the ball at every single timeout or stoppage of play. So they were attempting to make it as safe of an environment as they possibly could, but I guess nine H five, the only thing they couldn't eliminate was the fact that to properly play basketball and to defend, um, your position, you have to literally be, you know, in contact with that person and, you know, if you're, if you're under the basket going for rebound, you're, you're.
Right.
Well, that's.
You know, we, we love that for our kids.
Yeah.
Especially now our basketball teams, because they've been, had so, been so good last couple of years. We've won this for, for our student athletes and for our community, but.
What, when does the season start?
November 16th is the, is the date for which, for the gym can begin.
November 16th, so that's, that's like a week.
It is. That's why, um, great discussion tonight with the prior.
How many other districts? Have you talked, uh, you spoke to other districts?
I have spoken to other districts and, uh, the word is that no one sees a path. And at least in the northern suburbs, no one sees a path for us to do or participate outside of, uh, some of the, uh, small private schools. Um, some of the, the Catholic schools in, uh, towards the city were talking about moving their own home league. But we're still evolving. A lot of downfit schools where the, the support has been. Um, the, the other Fox Valley schools, there's not, there's not support there. There's some preliminary conversations that I've had. I'm not sure if they've made it to conversations with their boards, so I don't want to speak for them. That conversation may, uh, may be off rhythm, may not be official, not actually even, we really get.
So even if we do, you know, allow that, there's, there's a chance of.
They don't have much of a schedule to play.
Right, the schedule, I mean, it would be just.
Well, the reality is, is every school district that, that I communicate with is a member of the same CLIC cooperative that we are. So they receive the exact same letter from Saicama law firm, uh, as responding by four CLIC that we did. So, um, recommend that it's the same thing. So I, I don't see. And the, the IHSA, uh, has the executive director held a, uh, a conference call with, with the athletic directors of the state. Uh, I think there's eight hundred and fifty school districts in the state. I think there are three hundred and something school districts on the call, of which, and in a survey, I want to say there was, you know, less than thirty percent of schools in Texas believes that they were playing basketball.
No, they're probably, that was probably doubtful.
I have, I just have a couple of comments, um, because I lived this other day, but, but I worry about our, our, the chance of, um, losing our funding. We're already know that we're going to lose some of our funding because the Fair Pay Act didn't pass and the governor has already committed that there will be a cut in our funding. I worry about that. And then on top of it, if he gets to the point where nobody is complying with his orders, he has the ability to cut our funding even more. So I, I worry about that. He's already NASA's mayor's right now because they're not adhering to his executive order with, and forcing the government to run. So I, I think it's building and I, and I think he's going to really start hitting these tax bodies financially. So I, I worry that if we go against the executive order or the, you know, IDPH, that we're going to feel it, um, in our budget, budget.
Well, I think if I could comment, I think you're, you're right to be concerned by that because they have the, absolutely have the power to do that. Um, I just want to reiterate that my, those comments that I made earlier, I don't want that to be perceived as, as fear mongering or anything like that. That's not the intention. But the governor does have, and the Illinois State Board of Education absolutely has the power to do that. Um, you know, while I don't know that that would happen, it certainly could. Um, and Mr. Crady said earlier explicitly, the communication was looking at five percent cut of this school year across the boards for all entities and likely a ten percent cut next year. I mean, but that, that's, that's, that's huge.
They're big numbers.
So it, it, in addition to, um, a twenty to twenty percent raise in the flat income tax down the road, we kind of come a four or six percent is what we're probably looking at for everyone. So we're all going to feel this.
Right, right. Um, I, I hope that productivity rates increase and, um, you know, enough time to put these kids together.
Yeah, I mean, basketball, you exert yourself probably as much as any sport in regards to heavy breathing, constantly breathing out other people. I mean, it's, it's not a good formula for success right now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how you can do anything else, but just.
Wait till the spring if we can. Wait till the spring.
Yeah, what are the, what are, what about the possibility of moving this to the spring like we did for football? And that's a.
If they can, you just have some crossover athletes who play ball work. Who are going to, who are going to be, who are going to be having to make a decision of one sport over another if any of them can play in the spring. But that's, you're, I mean, so you're.
Unfortunately.
So wouldn't you rather have, make them have to have that horrible choice than the horrible choice versus not playing at all?
Put it this way, I hope they have that choice.
I hope they have.
Well, I hope they have that choice too. And as sad as it is to say, the, the days of the three-sport athlete are, are fading quickly. Um, and in a high school our size, you don't see too.
Yeah, there's only a couple.
Crossovers. You may, you know, football and baseball is more likely, but football, basketball, baseball, there are very, very few of them are even just a, a three-sport that includes basketball. So, especially, especially at our younger levels, they shouldn't be playing three-sports, but for sure freshmen softball, old. Um, they're still, uh, it's a big challenge, but just keep plugging along.
All right. So, anybody else have any?
So I, I, this week was actually a, a rather opportune time to look at the Wall Street Journal. Um, there was a report on the front page there where they took a look at the long-term effects of COVID because that is still a learning process here as well. Um, I don't know what the statute of limitations is if somebody develops something and then has a long-term effect and then links it back to student athletics. Um, so that would be a concern for me as well. Um, because you, again, like everybody said, you open yourself up to the possible, to the lack of liability insurance. And if there's a long-term detrimental effect on a student or a family over a period of time. Uh, and in this particular article, they were talking about lung issues and, um, uh, clouded head and, and other memory issues. Yeah, if you link that back and you say, well, it, it happened a couple of years ago, if that, that statute of liability or limitation is not present there, um, I could see where that liability actually could extend for a long period of time.
Interesting perspective. Well, I have, I hadn't thought about that. Whether we're seeing or reading anything about that yet. Uh, and it's so new. That's probably one of the first, uh, conversations about that, but that'll be, I mean, it'll be really interesting if that's ever set, what that statute of limitations is.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's obviously new law that hasn't been even adjudicated or, or thought of yet. But I could see where something like that starts to play in, probably no differently than other liability cases where, where there is a statute of limitations on something. So as, as this kind of works itself through our daily lives and into the laws and the, and then the court system, I could see where that could be a long-term liability for us, not just an immediate liability.
It, it could, but that's why it's important to act through a set of guidelines, principles that guide you through this whole thing.
Oh, no.
Time so that even if something, I mean, well, I, I still, I was within the guidelines, I acted, I, it was a reason, I conducted ourselves reasonably. You, you limit that exposure to.
Correct.
If that happens. I mean, it, and it, I, yeah, I, I definitely, I'm, I'm sure that things will evolve over time as, as far as the long-term effects that are residual effects that are happening in people, um, as a result of it. I, I contend I can't type because I had it. Um, I, I can't type anymore. I don't know what happened. Um, but it.
I, I was looking just beyond just the.
I know, but.
If we do this today, here's the long-term ram, potential ramifications.
Right. Now I hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there any other comments, John? Did you have something?
No, I, I would just say, gonna say that I, you know, I kind of, uh, I, I spoke with somebody at the IHSA that I know. You know, I think the thirty percent is probably way more than that they will have. Um, he was more at like fifteen to twenty percent, but he said, at the end of the day, you know, before they even get to the school or to that, uh, season that, you know, JV and team will shut that down. So I, I, I think it's a pretty easy answer for us to not move forward with it and hopefully they can play in the spring.
And I honestly was, was trying to, when we received this information last week, I, I was treading with the likelihood I could on this. And I expected that everything, um, was that, that, uh, yeah, and the governor, or the Illinois Department of Public Health would, would have some form of intervention prior to Tuesday's posting from our agenda when we needed to, to get something publicly. Uh, and that hadn't happened. I, I mean, with the election, maybe he was waiting or he doesn't have intentions, but I, I was surprised that they had not acted.
Okay. Anything further from anyone? Any further comments? I think it's pretty clear guidance, guidance from, on the board here that. On to item eleven, uh, closed session. Um, make the motion, um, to enter into closed session at seven forty-eight for the items enumerated in the agenda of second, second from Mrs. Maya Reno. Um, give me a roll call.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yeah.
Mr. Tentry.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yeah.
Mr. Quagmireno.
Yes.
Mrs. Maya Reno.
Yeah.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Question passed, says we will go down into closure. Now I can't.
Mr. Gentry.